Ten articles are zoning with a few IPs in there. Before we talk about any of them in particular, is there going to be an overall like handout or anything like that or a presentation?
I'm going to defer to Rich and to Walter about that.
You really, you really need the mic? Okay.
It was recorded.
Oh, okay. All right.
What we'd like to do is, I think we'd like, first off, we've, well, my recommendation to the planning board would be, which they haven't actually convened as a board yet, it'd be next Tuesday night, November 12th, is to definitely postpone everything related to the B1, based on where we've gone through the process, the public hearing, additional meetings.
Everything?
Everything B1 related, yeah. It was-
So what would that, what would that be then? So which-
One through six.
One through six?
One through six, yeah.
So now, some of them are recommended by the FinCom, but you, I assume the FinCom would be okay with that recommendation, Sue? So it looks like one through six may drop?
Yes.
Okay. And you think that that's, is that the consensus, Walter?
I think that's right. That's probably where we'll end up. We, oh yeah, I'm sorry. I think that's right, Jay. I think that's where the board will, will end up. There's sufficient question about some of these articles from a variety of sources that say that they need more work.
Okay. You feel, you're comfortable with that? You're going to bring it, bring it back as a package in the spring? Is that the thought?
It'll, it'll come back. It'll come back, yes.
Okay. So-
The open question a little bit would be whether, under a committee report, that we could maybe just have a little bit of time-
Sure.
-to speak to town meeting, because it, you know, again, it would be probably-
I-
Yeah, the, the presentation presumably would state the purpose of why are we doing this? What's the objective? What are we trying to work on to encourage development within town center? And describe the efforts to date, the progress that's been made, and the remaining efforts that need to be taken in order to wrap this up for next spring.
All right. Why don't we do this then, Walter? If, if it ends up that that is the case, what I'll do, because these are the first ten articles in the warrant, and I don't want to have people confuse and then do a committee report after that, why don't I kind of give one of you the mic for kind of a impromptu committee report right out, right out of the gate?
Yeah.
Just to say, you know-
Sure.
Before we get into any of these, we're going to give you a status report on this, just so no one's confused. You can give your report then.
That would work.
And then, and then we could do the motion. What I'll contemplate is maybe I'll, I'll kind of consent calendar, one through six, if that's what it ends up being, so we don't have to do repeated motions, but I'll, I'll contemplate that. I may not do that, but-
Yeah.
Okay.
I just was talking to Sue, and I've scripted these motions for advisory based on their last meetings.
Okay.
They had obviously recommended half of the B1 articles go forward, so we may need them to have another meeting prior to town meeting to get their thumbs up that they are on the same wavelength as planning, and we're going to IP them all.
I can't imagine they wouldn't be.
I, I wouldn't either, but I just, just thinking about process, I don't want to get out ahead of their, you know, agreement that that's what planning would like to do.
Well, I don't want the two boards at cross purposes.
No.
So if for some reason anyone on, on advisory is, wants to go forward with one of them, I'm going to allow the, I would allow in that instance, the, the planning board to make the motion to IP them all, and then the-
Sure.
-the advisory to reclaim them. I just, I doubt highly that they're going to-
Right. I'm just, I don't want to get out over my ski tips in terms of what they want to do versus-
That, that's fair. I'm sure that they'd be on the same page and would recognize that better to bring them back as a, as a package, because I think if you IP selective ones of them, you're almost dooming the other three to a similar fate.
I think in, in the last meeting, that was even maybe a suggestion made by the advisory board, so-
All right. So, and you can send them an email just telling them that this is what was discussed today, so-
Sure.
-we can, we can go with that. So is that, that makes sense? So you can give an update right out of the gate on one through six, and then we can just get into seven, eight, nine? Does that make sense?
Yep.
And whether you want to have something for the table out front is up to you. I don't care. If, if we're going to IP them, then you don't have to waste the, the time, but there's obviously been a fair bit of discussion on it, so-
You think?
-I think having a nice, clear statement would be good. I mean, I didn't think it was anything out of the ordinary. We've tinkered with B1 every few years on like almost a clock.
Yes.
So it appears fairly par for the course. Okay. So, that gets us one through six, right? Seven. Tell me about the, I think this one requires, so there's a short explanation there about the three tiers. Tell me about the three tiers, because this one, I think, is going to require some amount of explanation. What is site plan review, and what are the three tiers?
The three tiers are designed to prevent tears. Go ahead, Rich, if you want to.
So what, I was at the advisory board last, on the 30th of October, and what we'll do is, we'll, we will have a sheet for town meeting, just to kind of put it in more layman's terms, what's being done here as far as the changes going on, but I know there's, Mr. Weir's going to chime in just in a minute about a motion, friendly motion? Motion, sorry. No emotion.
So what are the three tiers?
So it's a site plan review, a site plan approval not required, site plan modification, site plan full approval. So the fundamental changes to this, one is presently there's a provision which allows somebody to continue and change how they operate a property and not necessarily have to go through the site plan approval process through the planning board, which is called non-applicability. This change to this bylaw would require that everyone has to have a site plan for the commercial property to, to have a basis essentially.
Okay.
So, and then moving forward, if uses change, and depending upon the nature of the change, there's a level of site plan permitting that would be involved. The lowest one is being not required, and there's some criteria that an applicant would have to present. Right now, it's to the building commissioner, town planner, to make that determination, but there's-
The second tier is like site plan light?
Yeah, I'll call it site plan light, and then full site plan review.
Okay.
And then there was some cleaning up, some other existing language, just, for example, dealing with temporary occupancy permits to create a little, an application of it, to create a little more flexibility on the timing, which I don't think that's in there too, but I don't think that should be the bigger piece of where things would be concerning, I guess I'd say, from people, but-
Okay. I think it'd be good to have-
So we'll have a, yeah, a little bit of-
It'd be good to have an example, you know, for, for each of the three tiers, what it would be. It's pretty easy to understand, because this, this one, I mean, I know what it says, but, but I do this every day, so to have a real plain language example for each of the three, A, I think is helpful to town meeting, and B, it'll shorten the amount of debate, and we'll, we'll probably head off the number of questions that we'd likely get.
Yes, I agree. So we, I will be putting together, like we had done last spring, we had a, just a-
Okay.
Like summary that's more than what's on the warrant.
I think that's helpful.
As a handout, as a power-
As a handout.
Handout.
And then, and then after the motion, someone's going to be able to kind of summarize all of that, whether it's you or Walter or someone else on the board?
Yeah, and one other thing that you touched on that it's, it's key to this, is adding the town planner to the building inspector, so there's two people now who get to pass on this as opposed to just one.
Okay.
An added pair of eyes.
Okay, that's good. And Chris, you had something here?
Yeah, I think we, I think Rich had talked to Peter about this friendly amendment, based on dealing with, from the zoning standpoint, really feel that this should be truly a planning board function, and that it should be, it hasn't worked with just the building commissioner, and even though they're adding a second-
At that threshold determination level?
Correct. That it really-
That's where the, the building inspect, building commissioner and, and planner come in, right? They're, they're not doing the site plan, or are they doing the-
No.
It's just the, which tier?
It's the review, the determination.
Okay.
And the feeling is that it really is the planning board. They handle site plan review, so there's no reason why they can't pick this up and continue to do it, like many other towns do, and eliminate the town planner and the building commissioner from the site plan review completely. So my question was, I wanted to make that as a friendly amendment, to change in the article where it says town planner, building commissioner to planning board.
Why don't you put it in writing and let me know what that would be, so we can make sure that Anthony and I and Carol have that on the, right there, what the amendment could be? If you have questions about language on it, work it, work it out with Rich and Walter and-
You should know that the planning board is opposed to that.
I, I understand. I will say anecdotally that I'm actually seeing movement away from the planning board on that first level, just for expediency purposes in, in other towns, but that's why we have town meeting. So I think it's a legitimate and fair amendment to make, so we can, you can insert it whenever you like, if you want to let them get a little into their explanation. Obviously, I'm going to let them present just after the motion, and if you want to jump right in with an amendment there, then I'll, I'll give you the floor for it. We can coordinate that a little closer to town meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Jay.
One other thing, Jay, just the length of this, I don't see this fitting on, we've got to fit on multiple slides, so hopefully, we're going to have lots of copies of the warrant at the meeting.
So in, in the handout then, maybe, well, yeah, that, that's fine.
You just, I just, we would be-
On the screen?
Yeah, it'd be kind of crazy.
Right. Just to see warrant, see handout, whatever.
Yep.
See presentation.
Okay.
Okay.
Just the, the one additional comment to the potential friendly amendment is, I mentioned last night, the selectmen's meeting, that the amendment should be, I think, at least in my opinion, clear, that if it's the planning board, there's a designated agent or, or something, so that, because the framework, the way this is written right now, there's a, it's a little more rigorous process on the front end, which requires like walking the property and those kind of things, so to the point about trying to be efficient, if it switches it out to the planning board without perhaps some designation, then we're really talking-
Well, I, I encourage you then to work with Chris to make sure that the amendment makes sense. I don't want to have an amendment and have a bunch of other language in there that then becomes extraneous, right there. So I think that's incumbent on, and in terms of amendment, I'm not calling it a friendly amendment. I'm sure Chris will present it in a friendly manner, but this is an amendment that's going to be-
Meeting on Friday morning with Blight and Rich.
A friendly amendment is something that I don't even take a vote on. I just accept, like a clerical or something like that. This is going to be something that's going to have to be debated, so, but, but I, I think that, Chris, make sure you work with them. If you don't, they don't need all that administrative step, fine, or if you want this after the administrative, the site walk and everything for the planning board to make that final, make sure it fits in. I mean, you're, you know this stuff, so just make sure it fits in. I don't want to have a motion to amend, I mean, we will if we have to, and then four other motions to amend to make the language match up. Do your homework ahead of time, so that it makes sense, and keep me in the loop on that too, so that, that I can kind of take a final look before town meeting, and I think making sure that Peter has the benefit of taking a look at it too as well would be good. So, okay. So is that, are we good on seven? So, anything else on seven? Okay. Eight seems pretty straightforward. Anything on that? We're just moving things from ZBA to planning board?
Correct.
Okay. No hurt feelings by ZBA on that one? We haven't heard anything? Nine and 10 are just some map stuff, should be pretty straightforward.
We hope nine is straightforward, but this is one, I guess, that didn't pass before. It's, it's to add the zone two for the new well field onto the map, which I guess we've had some pushback from certain areas of town before, and this is mission critical to getting the new well field that we've already appropriated money for online next year. We won't be able to open it, without it.
And we have to have this kind of protective district that's kind of under, so make sure you emphasize that.
We will, it's just-
Yeah, we will. So the-
I mean, the, the state wants these things just so.
Requires, not needs, not wants.
It's a requirement of the well. The issue that came up at the prior town meeting in the spring was covering other municipalities, zone twos that fall within the boundaries of the town, and that's, there was a push for that. It's not a requirement, the DEP, so that was-
So we're, we're going with the bare minimum that DEP is requiring?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And then secondarily, one of the issues, one of the things that came up through the public hearing was alerting people that when the zone two goes into effect, it potentially could be an issue for them if they wanted to add a bedroom, you know, based on sanitary requirements under Title V for land area per bedroom, because that would come into play under the new zone two. However, short, from my read, just reading through the book, unless you have a permit in hand, you're not going to be, the, the time has passed to be able to try to go in, add a bedroom from a septic system design, and get a permit, so-
In terms of being grandfathered?
To be grandfathered, yeah.
Unless they file a subdivision plan between now and town meeting.
Right.
Right. So, okay.
But again, that's only an issue if you had, you know, less than the-
Sure.
-10,000 square feet per bedroom.
Okay. So we may field some questions on that, but emphasize that this is about water and DEP is making this.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Good, good. Eleven, just supplemental budget.
Yep, and there's a, this, I think I sent you this-
Yeah.
-the spreadsheet which shows all the puts and takes.
And is there going to be any, any discussion on this at all? It all seems pretty straightforward. I assume those legal fees for ZBA probably relate to the 40B stuff?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep, and just, we budgeted what we thought we were going to spend, and we've had more activity, and we need to be able to deal with those, and we expect that they will come up prior to the next town meeting, so we don't want to wait till May to handle these.
That's fair. And what, did Peter raise his rates on the town council services line item there?
No, we have a-
You don't, you don't have to answer that. I'm just taking it as-
Well, no, it's, it's a reasonable question. We actually, we have a lawsuit we need to defend that's going to trial, and we didn't, and, you know, we weren't sure, so we need to-
Okay, so you may see a comment or two on that.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, be prepared to respond to it.
And then good old snow and ice.
Mm-hmm.
It's a collective wisdom of advisory and selectmen to take it from free cash.
KP came in under budget?
We budgeted the, the amount they requested, even though when we did the budget in the spring, we knew the other two wouldn't.
The other two didn't.
So we took the high road of this is what they asked for, knowing that-
So the assessment dropped a little bit, so we have some more factors.
Assessment dropped, and we're redeploying it to some of these other lines.
Got it. Okay. Twelve.
IP.
No prior bills. Thirteen, pretty straightforward. Somebody may ask you what that fund is.
Can't wait to talk about it.
I'm sure. It's a real page turner.
Take more Uber Lyft rides, so we can get more money.
Fourteen, pretty straightforward. Fifteen, pretty straightforward.
Peter, have you looked at that motion in terms of how we scripted it, to be clear that the full project is, costs $22,000 when there's two funding sources?
This is on 15?
Yeah. You can get back to me later, I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, I took a quick look yesterday. It looked fine.
Sixteen, is Lake Street work?
Lake Street work, general road work, and a new truck for the haul materials from the transfer station to all the places recycling and trash go.
Okay. Lake Street people happy with this?
Generally, there, this will, this will do the whole length. We are under a settlement agreement the town previously had signed to do the unpaved portion, and it's been through all the permitting, and it's, and so we have to do this as soon as we're able to, and we don't have enough money from what was passed five years ago.
Okay.
And then, that's about $85,000 of the cost. The balance is to, we did the base coat of paving on the, where it butts Main Street to, to a number, about house number 20. We never were able to come back and finish the second and final course.
Okay.
So the goal is spend 140, do the whole thing, be done with Lake Street.
Okay. And they've just been pretty vocal at town meeting before, so I don't know.
Well, I can't, I mean, we haven't had a appeal on the conservation condition order, which is great, because we were concerned that would happen.
Up at the top by the, by the-
By the lake.
By the lake, yeah.
So there are people who are anxious to see this project done. I don't, I, we haven't heard from the, again, you know, beginners on it lately.
Right. I guess there's always the, the flip side, is people probably thrilled to have it repaired, but worried about a cut through, so we're likely to hear a little of that.
Sure, might need a little traffic enforcement when it's done, when it's a new speedway to, from here to there.
Roll-off truck, 190, so I assume we'll probably, Thomas will probably want to talk about the roll-off truck, so we'll have, Bob can have his usual conversation with him. That's always the, the highlight of town meeting, from my perspective. All right. But there will be DPW there to talk about that, obviously, about the whole Lake Street.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
And a conservation, I think, could too, as well, given what, you know, what's been approved, what's going to happen.
If there's, if those questions come up-
Sure.
I'm not going to get into a lengthy debate about conservation stuff on this. This is-
We hope not.
Right. Okay, 17, some capital. Anything out of the ordinary there? Pretty straightforward.
I would argue it's straightforward, but-
Anyone complaining?
Nope. Nope.
Police cruisers getting expensive, Chuck.
They'll be a lot.
To give you a hybrid, so, for all those who are concerned. Going green. Hmm?
There we go. Pays for itself. Let's get, let's buy two.
Chief would love that. I told him he can only have one.
Chief, I'm with you. Let's get, let's get more. Okay, so that's 17. Okay, 18, I had a question, so I'll leave this to Peter. This doesn't have the four elements of what that revolving fund requires. Generally, I mean, the way we do them now, obviously, is we have the little table-
Okay.
-there, so I, I think you may want to, in the motion, say, it's obviously, we know what it is.
Yep.
Where the money is coming from, who can spend it, and I think the purposes are clear. It's the things, but I think you may want to specify, and you may even want to produce the table, the, the new column, however you organize it otherwise, but you have to at least have those four-
Good point.
Those four things, right, Peter? So just, if it's the senior center director that's going to have the authority to do it, or if it's whoever's going to have the authority to, to spend that money, that's, that's what it should be, and, and the source of, of those funds, that's pretty typical for senior center things. I mean, generally speaking, I, my personal feeling is that even if it's called a Council on Aging Revolving Fund, it shouldn't, the Council on Aging shouldn't be voting on their advisory board on programs. They're not really a fiscal board, so I think it should be at a staff level, just my own personal feeling, and as the former chair of the Council on Aging, and I'm obviously pro Council on Aging, so, but I, so-
Good point.
Consider who you want to spend it, where it's going to come from, things like that. I, I mean, I think I know where, where it's going to come from, but the, the statute requires that there be a, a source of funds, so-
We will, we will buff it up.
Nineteen, putting some money in OPEB. Has the town, I'm seeing a lot of towns do this, has, did we accept the newest version at the last town meeting of the OPEB statute?
Just before I arrived, the, the selectmen adopted a trust. I can only assume that-
So the newest version post-2016 actually has to be accepted, otherwise you're under the old version?
So I, I can't answer that. We'll have to research it. I assume we did, but I-
You might want to check the last couple of town meetings. I can't recall. I was wondering when I looked at this, if that is the case. If it is, we, we could tuck it in this motion, or you could do it in the spring. Similarly, then, under the new version of it, they now make you actually move at town meeting to, for the trust, to use the prudent investor rule. It's kind of a meaningless technical thing, but we can just do that for the spring, because I don't think there's enough notice here, but it kind of put us through some paces to kind of modernize our, our OPEB function. I'm sure you've seen this a little bit, Peter, in some of the other town meetings, but I, I think it'd be a good idea if we haven't accepted the newest version of it to accept-
Sure.
It, simple, I would just say, I move that the town accept Chapter 32B, Section 20 as amended, and transfer the sum of $25,000. Just, we'll just tuck that in, just to make sure in case-
Sure, no, that's great. I, I didn't, I just assumed that we had, I didn't-
The new version also has a whole bunch of new features that are actually really good.
Yeah.
In terms of investment and-
So the town accepted the law, Chapter, Section 9, or whatever it was, in 1967? This will be the first contribution, and I'm just curious, and our liability is like $26 million.
Yeah.
I know that we're not-
You're not alone.
No, we're not alone, but I'm just wondering, do you, what type of questions do you anticipate? Should we have a presentation available? Do you think people are going to-
I, if need be, I, I'll, I'll give a quick explanation, and you could give a further explanation. Peter will be available too, but-
Right. I just wonder if people are going to be frustrated, upset, want to talk about-
It's incredibly good fiscal practice to start putting some money in here.
I agree, which is why I, I really pushed for this, but I'm just wondering, since I haven't been here.
If they, if they, if people do ask questions what it is, I'll handle the initial, you could talk about it, Todd's here, Peter, we, if we have to get in any, any kind of depth, we'll get into depth.
Okay.
But I'll see if I can head it off, so-
Love that. Thank you.
We have not heard from anyone, Jay, about committee reports.
So I think you've heard-
No, I, I heard from someone on committee reports.
Oh, I'm sorry. I jumped one, yeah.
Yeah.
And the selectmen may want to get up and talk about the status of their work on the former police station.
All right. They should let me know.
We are working on that.
Okay.
Mr. Moderator, Town Government Study Committee with like two minutes.
Two minutes?
Two minutes.
Okay, that's fine. You, just, just to talk, Jonathan, or, or you guys have any presentation?
No, just to talk.
Okay. Same selectmen, just chatting?
Just chatting.
And I'm in a little bit of a war with Andy trying to shrink his presentation for renewable energy.
I'm sure you'll win.
Yes. I, I most certainly will. I love Andy. We all do. But I will.
It's amazing when those microphones go dead. I don't know what happens.
I don't know what happened, Andy. I'll work with him though. So, so water, people will be there to answer any questions about that water stuff if, if need be. Otherwise, pretty straightforward.
1,500-foot water main. Nothing, nothing, only 500 feet on the street.
Okay.
Yes, Bob will be there.
Okay, great. So 22. Okay, pretty straightforward. CPA, someone from the CPC will be around if need be.
I hope so.
Same 23, 24. People will, will probably want to talk a little bit about 24, probably. We'll see. 25, pretty straightforward. 26, also pretty straightforward. Right? 27 is a good bylaw. We're, we're doing that in all, in all of our towns too.
It's interesting when some towns push back. I've seen some push back. No, no one should change things but town meeting.
Yes. Well, if they do, they do. But it's just clerical. So 28, similar. 29, I'd like to do it as one motion. And then if any of the streets, there's conversation, I'll divide it.
So just from a legal perspective, since we have lots of people to answer that, is there, is there, we script them differently because we were concerned if they're, if they were in one, does that present any difficulties to the town not to do them separately?
I don't think so. But I, there's two things that I want to do here. And one, I'd like to do it in one motion.
I'm fine with that. I just, I just bring it up because it was a topic of conversation that maybe there was some important legal reason why they were separate. Case one didn't pass.
Well, I mean, as soon as I see any comments on one road, I will divide it out.
Oh, okay.
So, and have a separate vote on it. But do it in one motion. The other thing, two other questions I have are, with any of these roads, are we also getting any of the drainage infrastructure and the easements or anything else like that?
They already have the easements for that. They were, they already.
They were drafted, but we, town meeting hasn't accepted them yet. Have, I mean, we don't need to necessarily have town meeting accept them per se if they're drainage. But if there's any kind of other access easement shown on the plan, it's a good idea. So they've drafted them, right?
Yeah.
We're holding them in escrow. That's the, what I'm assuming is the case here?
That's correct. Yeah.
Okay.
So don't, doesn't the spring motion that we do that says.
First of all, that, I've been after the town to get rid of that motion because it's not legal.
Excellent. I'm ready to go.
Right. We don't need that article. And you, if you're going to take property, you have to be specific. So I've been saying, I said to Jack for years, get rid of that. It's not worth the paper it's printed on. But Peter, if you could add some language here that, you know, so make it one motion and then say, and further to authorize this. I assume these are all voluntary because they're all recent projects, right?
They are.
So, and to authorize the selectmen to accept deeds of such roadways and any pertinent easements. Peter, can you just get something from your files for that?
Sure.
That would be good.
Yeah, that would be.
So let's do it really just one motion.
Okay.
That takes care of the easements. It give, and authorizes the selectmen to take whatever action they have to take.
Perfect.
So list all the roads. So two, one motion.
One motion with everything. Move to, I moved at the town, accept Meeting House, Liberty Lane, Tailwind, Saddle Ridge, Silver Fox, run as public ways, and authorize the selectmen to accept deeds in fee or easement, along with any pertinent, any, something like that. Peter has the, has seen the language a million times. So I'm sure he can put it together for you.
Okay.
Is that okay, Peter?
Yep.
I don't want to make any more work for you.
Thank you.
And that's it? So any other questions? Anything? Chuck?
One quick, quick question about, you mentioned contentious article and that sometimes might involve me or whoever I have detailed. If, if somebody gets up and it's never, it hasn't happened since when I first started, where you might direct someone to be removed from the meeting.
Okay.
If they get too far. I, I just want to make sure that we're on the same page because I've never brought this up before. But you never know.
We've never had that. Are, are you thinking there that, is there something you're hearing that I should be?
If, if it ever came up, you're the guy.
I am the guy?
Yeah.
And then you're the, the guy I ask.
Yes.
So if there's something specific you want to talk to me offline about, I'm happy to do that. But otherwise, I will, I've hit the gavel exactly once. It was regarding a Lake Street resident in my nine years as moderator. So.
We have come close.
We've come close, but I've never, I've never.
Not you, before you.
But I will tell someone to stop. I will then ask that someone from the department remove them.
Yeah, okay.
If need be. I've seen it happen. I've seen fistfights. I've seen all kinds of things at town meeting. We have a generally really civil town meeting.
And I will say that.
But if there's something specific you want to talk about, call me. If there's otherwise.
I've never brought it up, but I just want to make sure we're on the same page.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think the, this town meeting's been pretty responsive.
Yeah.
To me when I've said, time to move along.
You've done a pretty good job of talking people out the door and.
Yeah. So let's, let's hope that continues. But I, I know someone from the department, you're usually there. If you're not there, there's, there's usually someone else.
I haven't missed in a very, very long time.
Right. Yeah.
Just one more very specific question. Back to Article 29. We had, the selectmen had their hearing last night to required step on these streets.
To lay them out?
To lay them out. And the, there was a couple of residents from Meeting House concerned about the fact that the road ended up getting built narrower than it was first planned. And there's no on-street parking. We had signs up there for no parking. And we ended up taking them down because we really determined that without having a fee or an easement on the road, we couldn't legally issue a parking ticket. The question, the, the fine detail that came up last night was, do we, by town meeting, taking the vote on the 19th, can we put the signs back up then and issue tickets? Or do we need to wait till actually the deed is recorded? Just wondering.
Well, town meeting is only authorizing the selectmen to accept and record those deeds.
So until, until they're recorded, we still can't put the signs up or issue the tickets?
So, but getting back to your point, I assume there's a plan on file somewhere that shows the actual as-built here, right? For these roadways?
I'm going to punt that one to, to Rich.
Well, I mean.
There isn't actually an as-built plan prepared for it.
Well, the selectmen had to lay out something.
They did. They did.
What'd they lay out?
They laid out Meeting House, road.
No, I know that they laid out the road, but they can only lay out something that's shown on a plan. So do they go back to the original layout?
Yeah.
So I don't care about the construction width. Has, has the layout changed?
Oh, no, layout hasn't changed.
So from the original.
It's, yeah, the layout is the same. It's just how the roadway.
So there's a recorded plan somewhere that shows these roads?
Correct. The actual curbing and sidewalk.
I don't, I don't care about that for the, for the acceptance of the public way. It's really just the right-of-way width that we have.
Yeah, there's no change in the right-of-way. It's just the physical construction modified.
So we have people anxious to see the signs back up. And I just want to make sure that we're on the correct side of that. When, when we're able, able to do that and issue a legal ticket, issue a ticket that's appropriate to do so?
Yeah. I mean, I mean, technically, it's when you accept the deed. But it really, for all practical purposes, it's when it's recorded.
Okay. All right.
So when there's notice. So.
Okay.
Which can happen pretty quickly. It's because none of these are takings. So.
No, none of them are taking. It's just.
Hopefully, the, in this particular one that we're speaking, the, the proper animal will sign over the deed relatively easily. I don't think they'll be.
I would hope so because there's no, there's no.
Yeah, no, it's not a taking.
There's no authority here to take it. So.
Correct. Correct. That's.
So if they don't give it over. And I assume there's, there's no appropriation here. So it's, that's just a, makes it a majority vote. If someone says they need money for it, or you have to, then that would tip it.
Nope, there's no money.
Okay. All right. Okay. That's it. Walter, you, you, Rich, keep, keep me posted on what goes on with the planning board? I appreciate that. Otherwise, it seems pretty straightforward. One-nighter. No problem. So it's, it is one night. This is definitely one night. Okay. I look forward to it. So keep me posted. Any other questions? Any photos from Carol down in Universal?
Oh, you've got all kinds of photos.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, that's great. Thanks, everybody.